Right, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Public Finance Authority, Water Utility Authority, Housing Successor Agency, and the City Council to order. City Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Sarno?
Here.
Councilmember Trujillo?
Here.
Councilmember Zamora?
Here.
Mayor Proton Rodriguez?
Here.
And Mayor Mora?
Here. I'd like to call upon City Councilmember Sarno to give the invocation.
Please, right. Heavenly Father, we ask your blessing on this council as we meet tonight. Grant us both wisdom and compassion as we make decisions about the future of our community. We ask this in your holy name, amen.
I ask you to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Who, me? You? Two things?
What is it?
Place your hand over your heart, please. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Anything else, sir? Tell us your grade, what school you go to. Do we have a special guest with us tonight? Hey, it's Santa. Hey, Santa.
Hello. I want to wish you Merry Christmas, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Merry Christmas.
And Mr. Sarno? I know everyone's name.
Was he naughty?
Madam Mayor Proton? Ladies and gentlemen, I want to wish everyone a very happy and healthy Merry Christmas and an even better New Year. And I forgot your little gifts.
Thank you. All right.
And also. You want a picture?
Yes.
Yes?
Not that of a camera or anything.
I think she got it.
I like when it was here.
Okay, we'll tell them.
Thank you, Santa.
Merry Christmas, happy New Year.
Merry Christmas. Thank you. All right, thank you, Santa. All right. Public comments are now open. Anyone joining us through Zoom can use the raise hand function if you wish to make a public comment on any of the items on or not on the agenda. The City Clerk will see if you have raised your hand through the Zoom application. For those that are here to make a public comment in person, you will have the opportunity once the City Clerk announces your name. If you wish to speak on a public hearing item, please wait until the public hearing has been opened for that specific item. You will have three minutes to speak. City Clerk, do we have anyone wishing to speak?
Mr. Mayor, we have four speakers, three in person and one via Zoom. The first one is Jeff Hamilton.
Jeff, welcome. State your name for the record, and you have three minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Jeff Hamilton, and I am with Goodman. As you probably remember, last week, my colleague, Lang Katchel, addressed this group and just reminded the group of Goodman's longstanding relationship with the city, as well as our interest in the CIP projects and the draft general plan. So on that note, I am here this evening to let you know that we have reviewed the draft general plan, and we have some thoughts associated with what's being proposed. We will be providing our official comments to the draft general plan within the required time period, but also wanted to make sure the council was aware of what's being proposed and the impacts that it may have to the city and its residents. We will elaborate within our official comment letter, but the overriding concern is that the proposed general plan is devaluing some land within the city, and it will have other significant economic impacts to future revenue for the city and its residents. We've commissioned a detailed economic impact study to evaluate the proposed changes in land use within the draft general plan, and we look forward to sharing the report with you in the coming weeks. And just to elaborate on that, Goodman is invested in this community, and we have been for quite some time, and we want to continue that relationship with city staff and council. And after last week's CIP reports, we believe that it's apparent and evident that the city, council, the residents, they really want improvements and need improvements within the city, and we believe the proposed general plan has negative economic impact on the city and its residents. And really, we want the property values to remain strong, and we believe, and keep the revenue stream for the city high, and so it does not decrease. And so, as previously mentioned, we will provide you the economic impact report, and we look forward to working with you and staff in the coming weeks and on, you know, both property values as well as capital improvement projects that, you know, we're willing to help the city out with and do what we can to participate. So, thank you for your time.
Great. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, next, we have Irma Witron.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Irma Witron, Lake Center Park Lane, resident of Santa Fe Springs. I'm here to comment on several items related to the city's proposed general plan update. The general plan update, as you know, includes a multi-year project that the city has embarked on, and in the general plan update project description, which the EIR, the Environmental Impact Report analyzes, includes an increase of over the 20-year period potentially of up to almost 4,000 new dwelling units. It also proposes to include 1.4 million square feet of non-residential uses, including commercial office, hotel rooms, industrial, and other facilities. As the gentleman before me spoke, which I wasn't aware that was going to be commented on, there's definitely an economic impact to the city. The Environmental Impact Report focuses on environmental impacts, as you know, and although city staff report indicates that there are no alternatives to the project that is being proposed, which is to add that much square feet of non-industrial, non-residential square feet and the number of units, the staff report indicates, and I believe is misleading, in that it indicates that there's no other alternative to this project that could be considered because, as the staff report says, that there is no other alternative that would result in unavoidable impacts to the environment, to this community. I would like to point to your attention to page 2.24 of the Environmental Impact Report, where there are three alternatives that are also analyzed as part of the project description, which is required by state law. And in that report, you'll find that there is an alternative, that is superior alternative, to the proposed project. Indeed, on page 5.5-12, it is called the Environmental Superior Alternative, which is alternative number two, which includes, which includes, it includes a description of the project that is slightly changed, slightly revised. The alternative number two and number three, for your reference, are alternatives that continue to meet the city's RENA housing needs allocation. So, there is no problem with that. So, I urge the City Council to take additional time to not only consider the economic impacts as the prior speaker spoke, but also take additional time and extend the comment period to January 17th to be able to explore other alternative impacts, including economic impacts to the city. I also urge the City Council to also delay it because the zoning tax amendments that are referenced as part of the EIR are not included in the draft document that has been provided to the public. Although the EIR document is labeled as a general plan update, EIR, and targeted zoning tax amendments, the zoning tax amendments are not part of the product that's been submitted for public review. In addition, I ask also that the City Council remove the parcel located at 11733 Florence Avenue from a medium-density residential and designate that as a low-density planned development designation instead. And furthermore, the plan also proposes to change the designation of all churches in the city of Santa Fe Springs from the current public facility.
Thank you, Irma. Okay, 30 seconds.
Thank you. I also ask that the church sites, the three, all church sites, as being proposed, be being re-designated to multifamily to be changed to low-density residence to maintain their public facilities. All churches in the city provide a community amenity, and the designation to multifamily designation extends and goes above and beyond what state law, recent state law requirements are, and I think it's an over and extension and loss of community amenity. Finally, I urge you to extend the deadline to January 17. Thank you for allowing me the additional time.
Mr. Mayor, next, we have Alejandro Witron.
Mr. Witron, are you speaking on the item relating to the general plan update? Because we will be opening a public hearing at that time. Okay, so just, so right now would be the public hearing, or right now is public comment on non-public hearing items, and we will note for the record that the last two speakers seem to be addressing their comments to that agenda item, so we will make a note of that. But this is for general public comment. We will be opening a public hearing at the appropriate time for the general plan. Thank you. Sure.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Councilmembers. I'd like to bring up to your attention a matter regarding some documents that my wife requested from the city regarding the property on Florence Avenue next to Lake Center Park Lane. I don't have the exact dates with me, as I wasn't prepared to talk about that right now, but my wife sent a letter detailing the dates that the documents were requested, which goes back about two months. We have received two separate batches of emails. Each one consisted of approximately 20 to 30 emails, and half of those emails were actually emails that were generated either by my wife or by myself or replies to us. So, we already have those naturally. I'm not sure why those are some of the only ones that are being sent to us. I would like for you to take a look at that and see if you can help us obtain the records, because this particular matter is a time is of the essence because of the property being under development or possible development. And so, we would like to take a look at that. There has been several extensions that were requested from the city, but I understand that there's a limit as to how many extensions or the timeframe that the city can request, where there's a certain point where it just looks like it's, the city's not being cooperative in providing those records. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Mayor and Council, Mr. Witron and Mrs. Witron, I can address that briefly. The, we are aware of the follow-up email. My understanding is that planning is reviewing it, preparing a further response. We produce all responsive records. We are in compliance with the California Public Records Act regarding timelines. We produce to you even the emails that you sent with the city because they're responsive to the request. So, we just, we're working to provide you with a complete response, even if it's something you've already seen because it's responsive to your request, and the staff is working on a follow-up response, and you should be receiving that shortly.
Do we have a timeframe as to when that will be?
Come to the podium. Wayne, come sit next to your normal spot. No, just, you can come to your normal spot.
So, with respect to the request for items, I did verify that the link that was sent to the Witrons does contain all of the information that they requested relative to the general plan and the staff report for Malia Home. If you click on that link, it takes you to the Planning Commission webpage. On that webpage, it has the date, which is September the 13th. You look at the agenda. The Malia Home is item number 10. You go to the staff report. On the 2021 staff report, you go down to item number 10, and it clearly lists all of the, the staff report, the conditions of approval, everything that they requested, and I verified that. So, I know that the information that was requested, we have presented it. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I understand that some of the items that were requested had to do with email communications between the city and the developers specifically, among other items. Not everything that Mr. Wayne Morrell has described is included in the requests that were made.
Mr. Mayor and Council, Mr. Witron, this is not an item before the council tonight. We will, we will be speaking with you directly to resolve this matter. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, we have two more speakers. These speakers are via Zoom. May I call their names?
Yes, please.
The first one will be Letitia Vazquez Wilson.
Okay, Letitia, you have three minutes.
Good evening and happy holidays, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. My name's Letitia Vazquez Wilson. I am one of seven members of the Central Basin Water Board. I'm an elected official like you. I'm calling to express my deep concerns regarding your Public Works Director, Mr. Noah Negretti, who serves as one of the appointed directors on our board. I'm concerned about his extensive pattern and practice of harassment and retaliation that he's engaged in at Central Basin against me. This harassment has and is causing me and my family grave financial harm, and I have suffered physically, having to go to the doctor for severe migraines and stress that his actions are causing me. I'm being forced to personally finance my defense on a frivolous lawsuit that has been filed to try to prevent me from speaking to the public about the very matters that I'm elected to talk about, which is water and the water contamination that all of our communities are experiencing. More recently, Mr. Negretti supported and initiated an amendment of the contract for our general manager to require seven votes out of eight members of the board to terminate Mr. Alex Rojas, who's the general manager. As you all know, you're elected officials. Who would do such a thing? Well, unfortunately, Mr. Negretti's actions have emboldened our general manager, and the abuse and the harassment has gotten worse. And Mr. Rojas has indicated in writing that Mr. Negretti supports all of these harassing actions. I have recently filed a complaint with DFEH, which is a state agency that's responsible for investigating harassment and retaliation. As I have mentioned, I will be pursuing litigation against all the parties involved, including Mr. Noah Negretti. I have come before your body to give you numerous examples of the harassment that I've had to sustain as a board member, and I have consistently asked this council to take action. I will be sure to forward my complaint to DFEH, to your board secretary, so that she may forward it and bring it to your attention as well. Thank you very much, and have a wonderful holiday season.
City Clerk, anyone else?
We have Norma Hernandez.
Good evening, Norma. You have three minutes.
Good evening. I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Good evening. My name is Norm Hernandez. Pleased to speak with you all again, members of the City Council and everyone there. I just wanted to, you know, touch base of what I felt last week during the CIP meeting, and a little bit more about what I saw today. As a City Council, one thing I know is that, obviously, you're very respected and you've all been elected, and in speaking with each, you know, some of you individually, I know that you're very vested in helping our community. An observation that I had most recently at the last meeting is that, you know, I do want to encourage the City Council to add more pressure to the city's staff and employees as far as being completely transparent with their communication, like, for instance, not relying on, and I'll give a direct example, like, for instance, relying on Wayne to be completely transparent. He is human. There's a lot of things that could happen. I don't, I did have an opportunity to review some of the information that was in those links, and I just find it very hard to believe that everything was, was in those links, all communication between the developer. And it's very important for someone else to press on and ensure that the due diligence has been completed, to ensure everything has been communicated. The same thing with, for instance, last week, I did overhear some, some talk about, you know, working on grants and ensuring that we're doing everything possible for our city to receive more money and to do the research and the legwork in obtaining that. We're relying on Ray just to, you know, do that, and although I believe maybe he is attempting to do that, we need to verify. It's going back to the trust, but verify that that, everything is being done to its fullest potential. So, City Council, if I could just please urge you to ensure that that's being done, you know, it has to be a way, you know, encourage the city attorney to provide more aggressive planning, that stick to it, somebody to verify that we're getting, someone's getting back to us. There's a lot of unanswered emails, a lot of waiting, even right now, the city attorney says, you know, we're going to get back to you when exactly. There's a big disconnect with communication and transparency, so please, I urge you to do more for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, we don't have any more speakers here, but I do understand there were some more individuals that came in after 6 o'clock, in case you would like to ask if there's anyone else interested in speaking under public comment.
How many?
No, I mean, there is people still coming in after 6 o'clock, in case you would like to ask for anyone else that's interested.
Yes.
There was anyone else that I might have missed since I picked up the list right at 6 o'clock? It doesn't seem like any.
Nope. Okay.
That concludes our speakers. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. All right, there are no speakers. We're going to move on. We're going to close public comments and move on to the next item. There's been a request to move item number 16 as one of the first items on the agenda, and if we have no opposition to item 16, we'd like to get to that one first. Item number 16, approve an agreement with Mission Square, formerly ICMA-RC, for administrative record-keeping and communication services pertaining to 457B, 401A, and 457, Deferred Convention Plans. Travis, you have presentation, the Director of Finance, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We've talked in the past about some of the changes the city's been working on with our defined benefit plans, or what we call the Deferred Comp Plan. So, these are city retirement plans outside of our main CalPERS contract for retirement benefits. Last year, the city engaged a consultant to help us with the review. Here, we have just an outline of the existing plans. The 457 plan, which also includes a 401A plan, is for our full-time employees. In total, has about $43 million in assets with 300 participants, including active employees, retirees, and separated employees. We have a 457 PTS plan, meaning part-time, temporary, and seasonal. So, this is a, the city does not participate in social security, and so this is a social security alternative plan for our part-time, temporary, seasonal employees, which has about $2 million in assets covering 650 employees. And so, currently, we have four different providers who administer these plans for us. Lincoln Financial Group, Nationwide, CalPERS, and Mission Square, which has historically always been known as ICMA RC. Go to the next slide. So, last year, about a year ago, we, the City Council authorized a contract with BFSG, or Benefit Financial Services Group. Our representative is Chad Norani. He's on Zoom and available to answer any questions that the council may have. So, in working with Chad and his firm, we've set up a, an oversight committee to review plan activity. We've made a number of changes already, which have resulted in a 64% reduction in the fees that are charged to our participants, as well as taking over oversight of the investment options that are allowed through the plan. The next step, which we're asking for approval tonight, is to consolidate from our current four providers into a single provider. So, by putting all of our assets with one provider, we can get an even further reduction and the most cost-effective return for our employee participants. So, BFSG worked with us to issue an RFP. RFP was issued. We received a total of five proposals. We evaluated those and interviewed the top two firms, which was Lincoln Financial Group and Mission Square. Based on the overall review, we're recommending to move forward with Mission Square to have them be the single provider for our 457 plans for both full-time and the part-time employees. The last note here, that all of the costs for these plans are borne by the participants in the plans, so there's no cost to the city to operate these plans, but we do have a fiduciary responsibility to provide oversight to the plan. So, we feel this is in the best interest of the participants and fulfills the city's obligation to act as the fiduciary. With that, I'm happy to take any questions. As I mentioned, Chad is with us on Zoom, and questions can be directed to him as well. And I wanted to also thank you, Mr. Mayor, for allowing us to move this item up. There were some other obligations for our consultant, and so this is helpful for us with his timeline. Thank you.
Of course. Questions for Travis or the consultant?
Thank you, Travis. Thank you, Chad.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I know this item is, you know, somewhat detailed and technical, but it's really going to save our employees and retirees a lot of money and fees that we've been paying for years and years, and this is kind of a movement across the country. Municipalities have really learned the fees that we paid, just, you know, we just got our returns, and they all look good, but a lot of money's been made by people, and it's a competitive market now, and now we're benefiting from that. So, I give Travis and his team all the credit for putting this forward for the employees.
Oh, that sounds really good. Okay, we have a motion for item number 16.
I'll move.
Second.
Motion is second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So, ordered. Item number six, Public Finance Authority Agenda. We have two consent items. Is there a motion for the approvals of items number 6A and 6B? Thank you. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and those opposed. So, ordered. Item number seven, Water Authority Agenda. We have three consent items. Do we have a motion for the approvals of items 7A through 7C?
I'll move 7A, B, and C.
I second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So, ordered. Item number eight, Successor Agenda. We have one consent item. Is there a motion for the approval of item number eight?
I'll second.
Second, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and opposed? So, ordered. Item number nine, Successor Agency Agenda. We have one consent item. Is there a motion for the approval of item number nine? Aye, and you opposed? So ordered, item number nine, successor agency agenda. We have one consent item. Is there a motion for the approval of item number nine?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Yeah, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, and any opposed? So ordered. Okay, item number ten, city council agenda. We have fourteen consent items. Uh, Daniel, city council want to wish to pull a consent item before we make a motion on all these consent items. Okay, if there are none, is there a motion for the approval of items ten? All fourteen consent items.
I'll move A through N.
Any of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So ordered. Okay, public hearing, item number eleven, consideration of an appeal development plan approval case number nine eight zero and related environmental documents. Is there a motion to continue item number eleven to the meeting of Tuesday, January eighteenth, twenty twenty-two?
I'll move.
Motion is second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and those opposed? So ordered, public hearing number, public hearing, item number twelve, notice availability of public hearing to solicit comments on the draft environmental impact report for the twenty forty general plan and targeted zoning code update. I would like to call in Assistant Director of Planning, Kwan Nguyen.
Hey, good evening. Evening, Mayor Moore and members of the city council. Um, as you're well aware, staff is in the middle of the general plan update that began in the height of the COVID pandemic back in March of two thousand and twenty. Uh, tonight, we're asking the city council to hold a public hearing specifically to solicit comments on the draft environmental impact report that was prepared for the two thousand and forty general plan and targeted zoning code update. Next slide, please. Uh, so the city as the lead agency has determined that the general plan and targeted zoning code update is a project as defined by CEQA. As such, CEQA does require that an E I R be prepared prior to approving any projects that may have a significant impact on the environment. A project with such magnitude as a general plan update certainly fits that criteria. Next slide, please. With the assistance from the general plan consulting team from M I G, a draft E I R was prepared in accordance with CEQA requirements. The draft E I R programmatically assessed the anticipated developments that could occur within the planning area. Next slide, please. So the planning area shown um on the map encompasses a total area of approximately e- eleven point five square miles, including eight point nine square miles within the city boundaries and another two point six miles within the sphere of influence. Next slide, please. So the draft E I R also discusses various alternatives as well as proposed mitigation measures that will offset, minimize or otherwise help avoid significant environmental impacts. Next slide, please. Um, the draft E I R was released for public review on November third, two thousand and twenty-one, and it will remain available for the mandated forty-five day public review period. That review period will end Friday, December seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Meanwhile, if anyone from the public is interested in viewing the draft E I R, it is available via the State Clearing House, the general plan website at W W W reimagine Santa Fe Springs dot org, the city website at city hall it within the planning department, as well as the city library. Next slide, please. S- staff would like to make it clear that CEQA does not require the city to conduct a public hearing on the draft E I R. Uh, the public hearing tonight is simply a deliberate effort to ensure that the community is continually provided with an opportunity to remain involved in the E I R process. Next slide, please. So tonight, uh, we are inviting the public to comment on the draft E I R. However, it should be noted that comments should focus simply on the adequacy of the draft E I R in discussing the possible impacts. Um, I, I do want to clarify that while we do not want to discourage the public comments on the general plan document itself, tonight we are seeking only comments on the E I R document and particularly the sufficiency of the document. We ask that comments on the general plan itself be provided separately. Um, written comments may be submitted to the city anytime before five P M on December seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-one, as it pertains to the draft E I R. Written comments on the general plan itself may be submitted to staff and the city anytime prior to the adoption of the general plan. Um, it should be noted that all comments received tonight will be properly acknowledged and addressed in the response to comments, which will be presented to the city council as part of the final E I R when it comes before you in February of next year. Uh, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Kwan. You said, do we have any speakers?
Mr. Mayor, we have one speaker, Alejandro Witron.
Yes.
Mayors, council members, I actually would like to concede my time to my wife, Irma Witron.
Good evening, Irma Witron, Santa Fe Springs resident. I will not repeat myself. Um, but since we've been tasked with um providing comments um specifically on the E I R, my prior comments um s- still are very pertinent to the proposed environmental impact report. Um, specifically, the alternatives proposed um as part of the project description for this project and the conclusion that is reached that there are potential areas of controversy related to the proposed um project, which is um m- mostly um based out of the land use decisions and the land use uh proposals that are being made related to adding additional units and adding additional square footage that is non-residential. The E I R indicates that there would be increased, increase in housing and vehicle miles traveled. Um, that is pretty normal uh for any E I R. Uh, there would be uh, but this um E I R is specifically indicating to you, council, that you should look at these areas and see how to best reduce the environment, environmental impacts to our community. The greenhouse gas emissions is also another area of concern, as is water availability. I point to you again to page two point two four where there are two alternatives. The reduced mixed-use alternative, which calls for a reduction of non-residential development, both and residential units, both approximately twenty-five percent less than what is being proposed in the general plan document. Um, and also the alternative assumes that the policies and programs would still apply to this alternative and also that the R E N A um assignment to the city of Santa Fe Springs would be met. Alternative three is also an alternative for you to consider. It's an alternative that would be fifty percent less less, uh, fifty percent less than the increase expected with the proposed general plan and land use changes prop- that are being proposed. Um, it also assumes um that the same amount of non-residential uh would, would be um provided in this project description. Alternative number three is called the reduced residential alternative because it focuses on reducing the residential units being proposed and the land use changes to less to not uh by reduction of fifty percent. This alternative also meets the R E N A allocation of the city. Um, I point to you again, since we're being tasked with looking at how these land use changes and uh different changes being proposed in the general plan of the city of Santa Fe Springs for the next twenty years. Alternative, uh, number two um is cited as being the environmentally superior alternative in that it results in a reduction of, of environmental impacts related to air quality. It is superior because the greenhouse emissions is also uh reduced compared to what is being proposed. Um, it has also been reduced with relation to noise, public services, recreation, transportation. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, that concludes our speakers.
Well, closed public hearing, move on to the next item.
Mr. Mayor, it appears there's one more speaker.
Oh, okay.
Uh, hi, Mr. Mayor and council members. Um, uh, my, my time previously was, was focused on the uh, the draft general plan. If I may, just a couple of minutes, shouldn't even be that long, on specifically on the E I R. Um, a good, couple employees within Goodman signed up. Uh, the, the staff offered a uh, a, a sign up on the website when, when they were issuing the E I R and the draft uh, general plan and things of that nature. Uh, myself and some colleagues signed up on that, and for whatever reason, we were not issued uh, a notification when these, when the draft E I R uh was issued. It, it, I don't even know, I don't even know if CEQA allows an extension on comment periods, but if that's possible, uh, I would appreciate the consideration of doing that, largely because it's a five, six hundred page document uh that we uh actually just noticed was issued uh just about a week ago. So uh, if, if that's possible, uh, we would appreciate the extension, as the, the previous speaker said. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Well, Christopher, Ivy, wait, is it possible to see an extension at this time?
I don't, I don't see Wayne here to address that. That's not on your agenda for tonight, that um, the staff can take a look at that and come back to you.
Okay. All right, well, we'll take a look at that.
We close the public hearing.
Okay, um, okay, we'll now close public hearing. And move on to the next item. And item number thirteen. Uh, resolution number nine seven four two, request for parking restrictions during certain hours on Rivera Road, Wellsford Place and Chetel Avenue. Like to call in Director of Public Works, Noah Negrete.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. Uh, so this is just part of our ongoing quest uh to chase uh vehicles from parking overnight in industrial areas. Uh, so these are on three streets, as you can see in your report, uh, on Rivera, Wellsford, and then half of Chetel, because the other half is actually in the city of Whittier. And I'm happy to take any questions.
How much more, I mean, obviously, this is gonna be continuing more and more as we get more uh overnight parking from homeless and to that nature of, of parking. Is this something that's gonna be, you know, should we be looking at the bigger picture here and continuing to maybe do it permanent for a lot of our uh business areas, or do you think it's just gonna, as we come in contact with business owners to ask for these closures? Because it's getting more and more.
I guess the question, if I may add to that, uh, Mr. Sino is do we need to do an ordinance? Because that would, you know, so if we do an ordinance, or does it have to be by each business owner has to, you know, bring up their own case?
Mr. Mayor, to answer the, the council member's question, um, we've had this, this discussion among staff and I, I was thinking exactly the same thing. We're having so many, why don't we just do it for the whole city? But we're hearing there are um particular businesses in certain streets, they definitely don't want that to happen. So if we, we may have some unintended consequences, we do something that big. But um, we can probably talk again with um staff, see that there's some interest from the council, but there is some um uh, there's a number of streets, and it's not just a few that would not want to do that. So we've been doing it one by one by one, but I understand your, your.
Is there, is there maybe a possible solution of doing an ordinance with maybe a permitted, you know?
Certain companies have.
Certain companies that get permits off of it.
Let Noah ask that, answer that.
Well, you're assuming there's only a few businesses that are falling into that category. Unfortunately, there's many, there's many that have outgrown their current parking, so they need the part, they need the street parking uh for their employees to park. Um, so, anything is possible. It's just a matter of uh what you want to do. Do you want to keep chasing this street by street? Or do you want to do something citywide, uh, but it would have impact, uh, good and bad to some people that actually need the street park?
The percentage of, to get this even on the agenda, is it ninety percent of the businesses have to agree to it, or is with, how is that going about?
Uh, there's different, there's different ways. So this one is an entire street. So not only do we have businesses, but we also work with our P S Os and our police services to identify areas like this as well. Uh, there's not a set number, uh, but we do require the majority of the people on the street to go for it. We've done one individuals uh in front of their own individual businesses as well. Uh, so this just tells me that we had more uh than one business that are, that was requesting this. But there is no limit, there's no restriction. You can do whatever you want, and, and, and as long as you agree on, on what to do. And we have been chasing this for about over a year. Um, so I'm sure we will shut down this area and those vehicles will find another area uh that's not signed.
Um, I know we have quite a few already like this. Our P S Os are off at eleven. Correct? Well, how like, how late do our P S Os work?
Ten.
So, do you have extra patrol officers and are they actually citing them? I mean, are the, is, is is there enough citing going on?
I'll have to ask one of the police officers to answer that question.
Um, I think too, though, even if they're citing them, it'd be pretty hard for them to even pay it. That's why they're.
I've had, uh, like, especially there's been a couple of food banks that it is no park, and they're literally within a week or two, they have this, they make their own city within the street. I just didn't know if do the officers make it like?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. So yeah, in uh certain areas of the city where we have this problem, where there is uh posting, uh, oftentimes those uh concerns will come our way and officers that work the overnight hours are directed to uh enforced parking violations that they come across. So yes. We would fill that gap where P S Os are not available.
Hour, I just didn't know if, then you guys picked up after that.
Yes. You're welcome. Since I've been here, we do get those calls and say, can we get enforcement this week? And we do it, and then they're happy. It's been, it's been the piecemeal has been working, and I know we've been slowly pushing them more towards South Whittier, but um, you know, we, we can look into this further.
I had a question on this because we are proposing to uh to do this. What, what were the problems to get to this point? Uh, were the homeless, were R Bs, were there parked cars? What, uh, do they stay there? Because our, you, this is something that we would like to know, let our residents know, what are, what were the problems?
Uh, so typical problems in these areas are vandalism, uh theft, uh throwing of trash on the street, uh parking the vehicle while the sweeper is going, so that way the uh, um, switcheroo cannot adequately keep the streets clean. Those are, those are typical uh problems.
And we've done this before, so do these problems go away when? I mean, did we, have we done a um comparison? Do the problems go away when we do, uh, when we approve this?
Problems go away in those streets.
Good, thank you.
They go to another street.
Another street.
Go through there.
They can go to the next street over.
Yeah, they go to the next street, but like we said, if the business rest, uh, the industrial, they would have to go through the process to get this on their streets if they desire to do this, so.
That is correct.
Maybe we can, in the future, um, how we were commenting on police patrol, maybe we can set up and figure out if we can get P S Os to work the midnight shift to then free up more police officers to patrol our residents and areas, and they can concentrate on the parking areas. So maybe there's something for that for the future.
Right, because I've seen it happen where they park there, they're homeless, they park there. Then, I guess we take care of it. Then I wa, I go down that street and I see them on a different street. So it, it's so uh typical that this happens.
Thank you, Norm.
Thanks, Noah.
Thank you.
I'll move to approve item thirteen.
Thank you. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So ordered, item number fourteen, this is Park Playground Improvements Project, authorize the purchase of one miracle platform equipment set and installation site work service by piggybacking off Sourcewell Contract number zero one zero five two one dash L T S. I'd like to call upon Public Works Director, Noah Negrete.
Uh, thanks, Mr. Mayor, council. Uh, so Gus. So Gus Hernandez, who normally would be making the presentation, has another engagement. He's at the Santa float right now, so I told him I would make the presentation on his behalf.
Right there.
All right, so thank you, Mr. Mayor. Gus lied to me and told me he was at the Santa floats. He is in the back, thank you.
I'll move fourteen.
I'll move fourteen. Yeah, we'll move fourteen, don't worry about it.
I'll move fourteen.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're, thank you.
All in favor?
Okay, all in favor? Any opposed?
Aye.
This was part of grant money that, this is awesome to see.
Oh, yeah. Good job, Gus, on the.
Hundred thirty-five.
We got three more parts, Gus, to be doing.
And after that, we have like, public work or other departments who we need to work on grants.
All right. You notice that two grant people are sitting right next to each other?
Oh.
We're there.
Nice. All right, item number fifteen, approve an agreement with Payment, oh, Pamentas Corporation for the water utility payment. Evil presentation and outboard customer notification and reminder services. Like to call upon Director Finance, Travis Hickey.
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor and Council. This is a project that's been in the works for too long, so we're really excited to finally bring this to you for approval. This is to engage with a firm of Pamentas who offers online payment services, but really much more than that for our water utility customers. And so, we, we had actually been working with Pamentas many months ago, as we got through the process, really was just a little bit uncomfortable moving forward after having just talked with one vendor, so we, we went through an RFP process. We received seven bids, interviewed four of them, and in the end, Pamentas ended up being the firm that we recommended. So we kind of went full circle, ended up where we originally started, but certainly with some validation in terms of comparing them with, with other firms out there, and as well as finding that a number of our neighboring cities use, use Pamentas as well with, with good reviews. And so, the, the firm offers, it's a, you know, twenty-four seven service, people can go online, pay their bill, they can, I'll show you some screenshots in just a second there, but beyond the, the payment service, there's what's called integrated voice recognition or IVR, where you can call an eight hundred number twenty-four seven, pay your bill electronically over the phone. You can sign up, you register your water account so that you can receive notifications of when, when you receive a bill. If the city needs to send out a message, we can give that message, and that will get pushed out to all customers that are signed up for, for those notifications. And so, really a lot more than just, just paying your bill online. So wanted to show you a couple of screenshots of what it will look like for the customer experience. So this is the, kind of the main screen that they'll see when they log in, and you'll see in that top left corner there where it says Pamentas, that'll actually say City of Santa Fe Springs. So, you know, through a link on the city's website, you're, you're taken into their portal, but it's branded and appears and looks all Santa Fe Springs. And so, in the middle are, are the two main areas that you can enter. On the left side would be someone who just wants to go in and pay their bill as a one-time bill payment. On the right would be someone who wants to register their account and can go in and log into their account and pay that way. On the top right, you see the different payment methods that are accepted. So this list continues to grow, but aside from your standard credit and debit cards, it's also Venmo, PayPal, I know they're working on other types of payment methods as well. What we're looking at here would be like the desktop version of their portal. There's also a mobile app, and so you'll have a similar experience being through your phone with a mobile app. This is what, if you want to go in and just pay one time, you go in, put in the basic information, even if you're doing a one-time bill payment on the right-hand side there, you would still be able to look at your bill that you're paying. You can schedule to pay it now, you can schedule to pay it in the future. If you do register your account, you'll have more functionality there. You can see the different menus on the left-hand side, so you can, you can set up auto pay, you can look at prior bills, your bill history, your payment history, set up your different payment methods so that those are, are saved and easy to use when you go in to make your payment. And so, that's just a glimpse. Like I said, this is the desktop version, but there's a similar experience with the, with the mobile version, so. I think that's about all I have, but I'd be happy to take any questions.
Travis, I, I wanted to say thank you for answering my questions earlier today, because this is long overdue. We've had so many residents ask me, when are we going to go online to pay our water bill? And it's going to free up time for our, our staff here. It's going to be a tremendous amount of time that we can go and do other things. And, you know, with the way the generation, with all this IT going, there's, I've asked people, you know, do you have a check? And the, the younger generation will say, what's that? I don't have checks. So this is, this is the way to go, and I want to thank you for your hard work and research to get this going. Thank you.
I mean, I, I think the council for the patients, you know, it, it is long overdue, and I take responsibility for that. We should have just went straight with the RFP, you know, over a year ago, and so it just, I take responsibility for that, but we are excited to, to move forward to finally, to get this, this service underway. The, the one other thing I wanted to mention was to talk about the cost. There's different cost models for these types of services. You may have noticed, when you pay bills online, sometimes there's a charge, sometimes there's not, and we have that option with this service. We can absorb the cost of providing this service, or we can pass on a convenience fee to the customer. And so we, we talked at length about that, and talked with our neighboring cities and looked what other cities are doing. And by far, the most common experience, especially for water utility payments, is to absorb the fee. And so that's what we're recommending, is to absorb the fee. And I support that because I think that will encourage higher participation in this method, which as you mentioned, is more, is better for us. It frees up our staff, frees up our customers from having to come in and make a payment face to face, or over the phone during our business hours, it gives them that convenience. So we want to encourage people and give them an incentive to, to really maximize the, the use of this system. And so, and, and in addition, by us absorbing the fee, yes, we're paying the fee, but we pay about half as much as what the customer would pay if we passed the fee on to them. So we, we think that's a much better deal for the customer as well, so.
No, that's good. Go ahead. No, that's good, because you notice that nowadays, everything's going paperless, and some of our, you know, some of the companies that I use, I mean, they give you like five dollars to ten dollars if you go paperless, so it is a great thing that we're actually moving forward using our technology. I think it's underutilized here in the city, and I know that we're doing our part to try to, you know, get back on track, so good for you guys.
How elaborate, I mean, can we make this? I mean, is, is future-wise, you know, it would be great to start paying our business licenses, our permit fees, maybe some of the town center fees and stuff like that, that people can, after we really get on here, I think it would make it a little bit more timely and get our money a little bit faster when it's convenient for them to be able to pay it on the phone rather than having to come in here or pay the bills.
Definitely, and we did talk with them about that, and there is certainly the ability to add other types of payments besides the water utility payments. And so, we wanted to get that on board to, you know, get comfortable with that, and that's the biggest, biggest kind of bang for your buck right off the bat, but, and as a council member recall, a few months ago, we approved a contract with HDL to assist us with our business license. So whether that would be added through this portal or be part of their service, the business license customers will also definitely have an online payment option. And so, and, and like with the recreation, we have ActiveNet, they, they have that option now, but certainly this gives us one more tool that we can expand on in the future.
Two, if you guys can brainstorm during your city manager's meeting, with all the department heads, right? So give you guys something to see who can utilize it.
Absolutely.
Yeah, we'll definitely do that, and I'm, I'm sure Travis is happy now it's off his to-do list, because I was on them, because it was on the mayor pro tems to-do list, so we got, we got it done there pro tem, so thank you for the persistence, and we're, we're here.
All right, absolutely. Again, I, I wish it didn't take so long, but I'm excited that we're finally here. And I wanted to say thank you to Alvaro, Lana, our tech, IT staff that all participated in, in the RFP evaluation and, and going through the details, so.
Right.
You know, realistically, it's probably going to take about two months, I think, you know, we're going into the holiday season, that's going to be a little bit difficult. We, we, we have an older water utility system, so it's not going to make it easy, as easy as a newer utility system to integrate the data. But certainly, we know it's a, it's a high priority, and we'll do everything we can to, to get, get it implemented as quickly as possible.
Right, impressive, well worth the wait. Thank you, Travis. Okay, there's a motion for the approval of item number fifteen.
My second.
Motion's second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So ordered. The item number sixteen was already considered earlier, and we will not move on to item number seventeen. Authorize the lease of stationary automated license plate reader cameras. I'd like to call upon Director Public Services, Police Services, Dino Torres.
Good evening, City Council. For this presentation, I'll provide you the background of how we got here today, and a description of the ALPR camera system, and how it functions. Next slide, please. Like many of our police-related acquisitions, I had conversations with Whittier PD management prior to the fiscal year to pin down potential needs for police equipment. An ALPR camera system was at the top of the list. As we all know, auto theft is a problem statewide. We also know that when crimes are committed, the likelihood of vehicles involved is, is pretty high. Subsequently, staff from the Whittier Police Department recommended a one-year lease of twenty solar-powered ALPR cameras from the Flock Safety Group. The cost of the lease includes everything from cellular service to repairs and customer service. The City of Whittier also entered into an agreement with Flock for a twenty-camera system. Flock is the only manufacturer, contractor of ALPRs that leases the system, thus saving the city the costs associated with ownership, maintenance, repairs, things like that. Next slide, please. Here's some examples of the Flock camera. This is what they look like. It's about the size of a shoebox, weighs around seven pounds. In this case, the cameras that would be put up are solar-powered. The picture in the center is an example of that. The total weight for both items, both the solar panel and the cameras, around thirty pounds. And these cameras would be attached to an existing city pole or traffic signal, or Flock would provide a pole similar to the ones in the pictures above, those two pictures, in center and the lower right. Next slide, please. And so let's get into how they, how they work. It's pretty simple. So, item one, the camera scans vehicle plates as they move through an intersection. And then two, the plates are compared to, compared to state stolen and wanted vehicle databases. Then three, if there is a match, then we go over to four, which is a picture of the license plate, back of the vehicle and location, go to both dispatch center and patrol vehicle, which would be step five there. And this system is cloud and web-based, and does not require software, computer hardware to be installed and operated. Next slide. Questions?
I got one, Dino. What if a car has no plates? Is there a mechanism to?
Yeah, so what happens is, again, it takes a picture of the back of the vehicle, right? Usually vehicles have distinguishing characteristics. So let's say a, the bumper, maybe there's a dent on the bumper, maybe there's a sticker, maybe it's tinted windows, things like that. So, so it's still helpful.
Like a tattoo.
Exactly, tattoo.
So that'll trigger a response that?
Well, let me, let me take that back. So let's say there's a, there's an incident, you go back to, okay, let's say it's a black Accord, a black Accord, we know about that, we don't have the license plates. We go back, okay, what time it happened, and there's a timestamp. So we look back at, you know, seven oh five, and we look between seven oh five, seven fifteen, we see what black Accords went through that intersection. And then from there, we narrow it down. So there's three Accords, two Accords, and we look at distinguishing characteristics, and that's how it's narrowed down.
So we have twenty allocated.
Twenty.
We've picked locations for this.
So we're in the process right now of, of picking locations. So the, the, the model for, for, for these types of cameras is volume, right? So you typically put them at high, high-volume intersections that are entering the city, so off of maybe freeway, off ramps, things like that, right? That's the starting point. They capture two lanes, so you have two lanes, and again, it only takes the back of the vehicle. Again, we're, we're, right now, we're nailing down the intersections that we want to put them at, and then based on consulting with the contractor, based on volume, and based on other types of incidents.
Mr. Mayor, that's the ideal place, but also we've had our recent incidents in the Los Nietos Park area, so I also like to see them in those neighborhoods that have been impacted. So we're going to have a discussion about where putting those, and I'm very familiar with these cameras. When I was city manager of Roanoke Hills, all four cities on the Palos Rais Peninsula put them on every location where you cannot enter the, the peninsula without hitting these cameras, and we prevented many crimes, we solved many crimes, we even dealt with crimes that were in progress, because they can track, you know, where a car is going from place to place, there's identification. So I'm really high on this program, and I think it's just going to be a start, because I, I would like it to be where no one can go into any residential neighborhood without getting hit with one of these cameras. And so this is a start, but it's not the end.
Obviously, we'll have a conversation with.
Yeah.
Strategically put them in positions to where it makes sense for them, for us.
Yeah, so we'll map that out, talk with, with the chief, with the captain, get that feedback from you guys, and then, and do that. So yeah, it's twenty, twenty cameras, and it captures two lanes, two lanes.
Especially, oh, go ahead.
I had a question, on the, you have steps, one through five?
Yes.
How fast do you get to five?
Could you, could you put that up, please? How fast do you get to, okay, so within ten seconds, ten to fifteen seconds, it gets there.
And how long has this plate reader been around?
It's been out, around for a long time, so I don't know, maybe it was seven to ten years ago. So ALPRs have been around for a long time, they're mounted on vehicles, they're fixed. These are great because they're, you know, they're, they're self-sustained, they're, they're, they just attach to a pole, they have the solar, solar panel, so you can move them, right? But it's been out for a while, it's just what happens is, let's say they're in a vehicle, and a vehicle can't capture as much as a stationary camera at a, at a intersection, right? A vehicle's only in use, I don't know, eight hours, ten hours a day, it depends. It's out of service, and you can't take the ALPR out of, out of the, the vehicle and put it into another one that fast. So it's been around a long time, but, you know, it's evolving. And so now we're at solar, and, and then this is a company that strictly leases the equipment. And so it's, it's a cost-saving, because what I mentioned, that, you know, customer service, repairs, things like that.
Do we have any other type of cameras on our signal lights, other than these type?
Well, not any, I would call these police-related ones. I don't know if there's maybe Public Works, maybe there's traffic ones, but those are, I think they're managed by.
I've seen those in other cities, I've seen like a weird contraption that looks like a camera.
We, we still have the ones from the sheriffs, I believe, you know, if you guys ever notice on the poles, they're, they're still there.
We have the poles, but not the camera. So what you're referring is to photo enforcement, which is similar technology, but, but that was, you know, again, took picture from the front to identify the person. So we do have some of those poles, maybe, maybe, I think over on Pioneer and Florence that are still up, and so we just left that there.
Are they working?
No, no, the poles are there, but the cameras aren't. Oh, the poles where they were attached to.
Okay, so that's good, this is.
That is mayor pro tem. You may have seen also, a lot of, a lot of cities use the red light cameras, so they're trying to capture people running red lights, and that's what's popular ten years ago, there's less and less of those, because they cause accidents also, so I don't know if that's what you saw on intersections.
It's on Pioneer and Flo, and Florence, that's one of the intersections where we had photo enforcement two, ten, fifteen years ago, and those are the remaining poles from, from that.
Also, when they get put in, can you do something where you keep the statistics probably separate, just so we can see how well they're utilized when, when, you know, whether it be through the safe neighborhood meeting or council meetings, just to give everybody, you know, some kind of notice on how well they're working? Just, just so if we need to have more cameras be put into the city, then it makes it a lot easier. I mean, because I know, just talking, just with, where, you know, where, why we got the cameras, just, and the area, I mean, you have, Los Nietos Road is probably one of the busiest areas that we're probably going to be looking at, Los Nietos and Pioneer, and then we have Los Nietos and Norwalk, but then we have that one street in between that, that's where a lot of the traffic comes through also, so, you know, hopefully those are the three spots that you guys are utilizing.
Yeah, that's a good point. So, so most cities, again, this is an initial, really, twenty cameras is really the, kind of the start, what they figured out is open twenty cameras to start, and usually most cities up it, based on the success.
Okay.
Thank you.
I just, one more before we leave, sorry. So it's the company that monitors this twenty-four hours a day, and then they notify our way to police department, correct?
Okay, so what happens is this, is it, it takes pictures, it goes up to the cloud, secure cloud service, okay? It can only be there for thirty days, and then it's dumped, okay? Anything that the police department may need, then gets, it gets transferred before, before that to their, to their. Anything that the, uh, Police Department may need then gets, it gets transferred before, before that to their, to their, uh, secure files. And so that, they have that in case. Let's say there's an ongoing, there's an ongoing case, a felony, something they're dealing with, but, so it goes up. Stays there for thirty days, okay? And the thirty-first days, it's gone.
You know, I think the, the question is, it, it also can ping the Police Department if there's a car, uh, in the city at the, at, at that point. If it was stolen, if it was.
Oh yeah, so, so what happens is, is they're tied into, so if you go back to one through, here it goes, one through five, so the transmitter, so when it matches, the, the, uh, the system is comparing it to stolen vehicle databases at the federal and state level. Okay? Then when it hits a match, then that's when it goes o- over to the PD to dispatcher and to the officer. And it gives you a picture again of the license plate, of the back of the vehicle, and the location where the vehicle went through. So it's a timestamp of that.
So the first part is almost like a facial recognition process?
I wouldn't use facial, but yes, it takes, it's looking and recognizing if that, if that license plate is on the hot list from the federal and, and, uh, SBS services at the state level.
What is, what is that transmission? Fifteen seconds?
Ten to fifteen seconds.
Thank you. Any more?
Right.
I'm sorry?
The, the, what we have here is actually a contract, correct?
Yes, it is.
Um, there's a typo. You might wanna check on it.
Okay. Okay. No, thanks, thanks for pointing that out.
All right. Do we have a motion for the approval of item number seventeen?
I'll move.
My second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So ordered. All right. Item number eighteen, recognition of Mark Yatesa for Eagle Scout project for the renovation of the Serenity Zen Garden at the Gus Velasco Neighborhood Center. I'd like to call upon Family Human Services Manager, Ed Ramirez.
Evening, Mister Mayor, Council. Um, this evening, I'm here to introduce and recognize Mister Mark Yatesa uh, for his renovation of the Serenity Zen Gardens Gus Velasco Neighborhood Center, um, in completion of his Eagle Scout project. Um, but before I do that, um, I just wanna give a little background of what took place. Excuse me. Um, the process of completing the Eagle Scout project is quite lengthy and involves a deep commitment from the scout. After identifying a project, the scout must develop a plan of implementation that includes supplies, logistics, safety concerns, and fundraising. Project is a culmination of scout's leaders', uh, leadership training and is a requirement to attain the final rank of Eagle Scout. In December two thousand nineteen, uh, Mark approached us, a local candidate from Troop Fifty-Four. Um, he approached the Family Human Service Division and, uh, was asking to see if there was any, um, projects that he could complete as, as part of his fulfillment for the Eagle Scout. Uh, we identified the Serenity Zen Garden, which is located at the Gus Velasco Neighborhood Center. Mister Yatesa was very instrumental in transforming the garden to a place of beauty. Um, he weeded and removed dead plants, raked all the planter beds, planted approximately thirty-five new plants. Replanted several existing, uh, and, and transformed, uh, a variety of different, um, uh, equipment needs such as, uh, tool shed. Uh, provided shovels, brooms, and tools. And I'll allow him, he's actually gonna give a little brief overview of what he did, uh, at the garden. Um, the entire project took Mister, uh, Mister Yatesa approximately, uh, three, four weekends. And unfortunately, due to COVID nineteen, um, with the city closures, the delay in his actual ceremony. Uh, we were unable to recognize him at that time, but now with, uh, presentations being conducted, we are here to do so this evening. Um, so I'd like to introduce Mister Mark Yatesa for, uh, his accomplishment of Eagle Scout, and he'll give a brief overview of his presentation. Mark?
Hello, Mister Mayor and Council. Um, this is the, um, project I did in December of twenty nineteen. So this is what the garden looked like just shortly before I started moving in some of the equipment that I was gonna be, um, installing and helping me clean up the garden. Um, uh, this is like, pretty much like exactly what the whole garden looked like. It just kinda looked like, you know, it needed some shining up, and it was um, just looked very out of use. Uh, these are just more pictures of, of before. And then, um, I, uh, installed these, um, one is a shed. I purchased the shed on the left, and then I built the potting, um, station on the right. Um, and I installed them into this picture on the left, which is that back corner. And these are, uh, all the, uh, tools that I donated, with rakes, brooms, shovels, um, and some, like, kneelers for, you know, some of the older adults that wanted to use the, utilize the garden, as well as, uh, pots and potting mix. And then these are some of the pictures of afterwards. I, uh, installed all these new plants on the picture to the left in the back, and, um, added some wood chips. And these are some more pictures. Uh, I added some of the herbs and, um, peppers into the herbal garden, um, to make it look more bright. And this is a picture of the finished project. And thank you.
Hey Mark, real quick, Mark, I have a question. On Bartley, there's a house that needs some renovation too. Can you show up?
Yeah, I get that a lot, actually.
I'm being serious. No, the, um, the potting, um, how you built that? So take for instance, is if we can implement some kind of program, uh, will you be willing to build some more maybe for, for some seniors? Something that, you know, see what we can do for that?
Yeah, absolutely, definitely.
And I mean senior citizens, not seniors in high school, just in case.
Yeah, definitely. Um, they're super easy to build. I know that, uh, a couple there, because I do work at the, uh, at the GMVNC. So I know that I've been talking to a couple of seniors that have, um, used it before, and they really like it. They, you know, I know they would be more than happy to have one at their home.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
For sure, man. Awesome job, man.
Good job.
Yes, uh, Mr. Mayor and Council, I just wanted to also report, since then, Mark is now an employee of the city and is actually working at the Gus Velasco Neighborhood Center.
All right.
All right.
All right. Mark? Come forward, please. Now, before I present this to Mark, first of all, congratulations on the Eagle Scout. You know, very, very few people actually get to that level, and I'm very proud of you.
Thank you.
I've known Mark since, uh, I was taller than him, and, uh, quite a while back ago. Yeah. And, um, also, uh, he's been a lifeguard here at, was at the pool as well, so, you know, uh, definite incredible employee and an asset to our team. And now we have this, uh, production that he's put together. So let me read this for you real quick. Uh, this presented to Mark Yatesa for outstanding achievement and exceptional leadership as evidenced by his attainment of Eagle Scout. The City of Santa Fe Springs appreciates his valuable contributions to the Serenity Zen Garden at the Gus Velasco Neighborhood Center. Presented the seventh day of December, twenty twenty-one. We, as a council, very proud of you. Congratulations.
Get up closer.
We get closer or not?
Come on over.
Well, go, welcome fit.
You can fit.
Yeah, come on.
Go on, you know, fit.
Yeah, we do, up on the back.
Yeah, squeeze.
Yeah, got it? Come on, go.
Don't worry.
I'm smiling.
Yeah, we do.
Sit down, sit down, no, sit down.
Okay, I'd like to call upon City Manager Ray Cruz.
Yes, honorable Mayor and Council members. First, I want to congratulate the Public Works Director, Noe Negrete. Engineer Robert Garcia, and the entire team for completing the Town Center Parking Plaza Lot Improvements Project in the fantastic ribbon-cutting ceremony that we had last Tuesday night. I, I received many compliments over the last week from both the, uh, the community employees and how beautiful it looks. It is very difficult to construct new amenities next to an old structure like City Hall and make it look good, but they did that perfectly. So, uh, again, congratulations to everyone involved. Second, uh, I want to congratulate Marcella Valderas and Gus Hernandez, the entire Parks and Recreation Team for putting on a wonderful tree lighting ceremony. The new location at the Town Center Plaza was a great idea and made the event so much better. And lastly, um, we often say our department directors are working directors. This is because our city's relatively small staff size, and our department directors many times do assignments and tasks that are typically done by line employees. Sometime that is by design, sometimes it's by circumstances. And there was an incident that happened last week that illustrates this point so well. On December first, Chief Brent Hayward and Director of Public Works, Noe Negrete, went to lunch together. They rode in Mister Negrete's vehicle, with mass, of course, and discussed interdepartmental coordination issues. Upon finishing their lunch, they were ready to jump on the I-five freeway at Valley View Avenue. First slide. While coming up on the on-ramp, Mister Negrete noticed a vehicle stalled in one of the two of the ramp lanes. Just as they were passing the stalled vehicle, Chief Hayward said, "Stop, pull over." Before jumping out at the vehicle, Chief Hayward told Mister Negrete, "Call nine-one-one." As Mister Negrete looked back over his shoulder, he could see a pedestrian laying on the ground approximately fifty feet in front of the stalled vehicle. Furthermore, he could see a bike laying in front of the vehicle. It was now obvious that the person who was hit by the vehicle was riding a bike. Chief Hayward instantly started administering aid to the person struck by the vehicle. He was performing the duties of a paramedic, asking the injured person the extent of his injuries and trying to keep him calm. After contacting nine-one-one, Mister Negrete came over to seeing, to try to assist Chief Hayward. Upon seeing the person's leg bent in the opposite direction it was supposed to be, he decided to try to help in other ways. Mister Negrete started performing traffic control for vehicles approaching the on-ramp and to ensure safe passageway for vehicles and for Chief Hayward and the injured person. Second slide please. Santa Fe Springs Fire Rescue responded along with the CHP and subsequently took over the scene. The injured person was transported to a trauma center to tend to his injuries, uh, which were a multiple fracture broken leg, seven broken ribs, a broken clavicle, broken shoulder, skull fracture, and a small brain bleed. It is great to see how Chief Hayward responded so quickly, uh, and helped a person in need. He was calm and reverted back to his paramedic training to help this train through a very difficult moment. I applaud both Chief Hayward and Mister Negrete for being outstanding working department directors and willing to help anyone in their time of need. Therefore, I'm publicly going to give them two official "You've Been Caught" and "Act" cards for being compassionate employees and going above and beyond the call of duty. These cards, uh, will, will pay for a meal at a local Santa Fe Springs restaurant, so you're very congratulating, a round of applause to them. Now, I'd like to bring up Mister Negrete to give his report.
Thanks, Ray. Um, it was pretty awesome to see that, by the way. That, you know, I, I thought the, the guy was, you know, causing traffic. So I was upset at the car being stalled there, right? And, uh, Fire Chief just said, "Hey, stop," and he realized right away what was going on. Uh, I was just so impressed with his composure in that whole scene. And when that guy saw the guy's leg the other way, I, I, I can't do that, so, uh, directing traffic is better for me to do that. So again, uh, Fire Chief, you did an awesome job out there. Uh, so just, um, I wanted to show you, uh, before and after pictures of Santa Fe Springs Park. The rec building, the cabinets were completed this week. Uh, so those are the before pictures. Can you go to the after picture now? Uh, so significant upgrade. Uh, I wanna thank the staff for getting that done, uh, before the holidays. And also, uh, thanks to Park and Rec staff, uh, for accommodating our schedule there. Uh, second item, uh, I do want to commemorate today is the eightieth anniversary of Pooh Harbor. Uh, so I do think it's, uh, we should, uh, take a few minutes to reflect, uh, and give thanks to all of our military and our veterans. Uh, so hard to believe eighty years has passed. And last but not least, this is our last meeting before, uh, the end of the year, so we wanna wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy Holidays. Thank you.
Thank you, Noe. Now Director of Planning, Wayne Morrell.
Lieutenant, Honorable Mayor. Council member of the audience, I have three really quick items. The first one is to really thank Maricela and her staff. I attended the tree lighting ceremony for the first time in all the years that I've been here. And I was amazed the way it was laid out, seeing the long line for Santa, for the train ride, just seeing the happiness on the kids' faces. It, it was, it was absolutely in- incredible. I was, I, I was amazed. And just after the council lit the ceremony and lit the tree and the snow came out, and all the kids just running to playing it, it was absolutely incredible. I know I joke around that, you know, Public Works gets one week, planning gets a month, and we're all important, but really, community service, and this is my opinion, they really have the pulse of the community. And to just see so many people there and the joy in their faces, I, I think it was absolutely incredible. So Maricela and your staff, oh, and Maricela and your staff, uh, an incredible job. And they're already planning for next year, if you could, could believe that. So the second item, real quickly, we were referring to grants earlier. And just to let Council know, and that was mentioned before, but Jack Wong has a firm, and he was the gentleman that got us the three hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars for the general plan. Another sixty-seven thousand for planning grant, and numerous other, other grants. So I know that is something that we're looking into, but he has been very successful with planning and in other cities. And lastly, may I have the slide, please, Jeff? Just wanted to tell everyone compliments of this, of the season from the planning and building departments. And if you don't like compliments of the season, Feliz Navidad, Merry Christmas, all the other stuff that goes along with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Wayne. Now I'd like to bring up Director Police Services, Dino Torres.
What's that? Okay, good for the floor. Okay, good evening, City Council. Um, the Police Services Center decided to reach out to the community, um, more, uh, during this holiday season. So, uh, Michelle Narwood, uh, who, who isn't new, she's been here three, four years, I think, with, uh, with our department, with the city. She's been, uh, she's Assistant Director of Police Services. So she came up with this idea of a cookie and photos of Santa. Um, so that we can reach out to the community by them coming to our facility, seeing what we do there, uh, get a photo with, with Santa with, uh, some police officers. So we'll have that all scheduled for Monday, December the twentieth, from five-thirty to eight-thirty. We'll provide them, I think we got some cookies and some milk or something like that. So, uh, it should be a fun time, and, uh, we look forward to seeing the community there. Thank you.
Thank you, Dino. And now Fire Chief Brent Hayward.
Mister Mayor and Council, good evening. Again, uh, appreciation and, and, and remembrance for, uh, December seventh and, and, uh, Pearl Harbor Day. Our hearts go out to our veterans and, and appreciate to everybody. Happy holidays to everybody. Be safe out there, and, uh, and, and we hope everybody has a good time with family and, and enjoys the holidays. Uh, can I get the first slide? I'll make this a quick one again. Uh, just what's happened in the last fourteen days. Obviously, uh, we've heard of, uh, Omicron variant. There are now three cases reported in the County of Los Angeles. But what's happened really within the last fourteen days? Uh, fourteen days ago, our COVID positivity rate was at point nine-one percent. There is a little bit of a spike that happened just after the holidays, and we were at, uh, an average of one point four-three percent today. Uh, my apologies, the two graphs. My apologies, the two graphs did not transfer well today. There's a little bit of a spike on both the right-hand sides, but they are already coming down. So we think that this was just a couple of day spike, just due to the holidays and people congregating together, traveling together within the County of Los Angeles. So we think this is coming down again. But it's good numbers. If you look at the hospital average rate 14 days ago, 600 were in hospitals, and we are lower than that still now. What's changed in Santa Fe Springs? 14 days ago, the prior 14 days, we maybe had close to 30 positive cases. Over the last 14 days, again, that little bit of a spike, we're at 226 COVID positivity cases within the city and one additional death, for a total of 49 since the start of the pandemic within the city of Santa Fe Springs. So boosters are out there. We know the holidays are coming. We encourage practical social responsibility within your own family. Gather outside if you can, small groups, but be safe, please, and enjoy the holidays as best you can within this time. Next slide. Again, on the side of safety, we always talk about the things that go on within the holidays. The National Fire Protection Administration asks everybody to put a freeze on holiday fires by just practicing some safe practices when it comes to lights and Christmas trees. One in every 40 Christmas tree fires that occur in the United States result in a death. Last year, or every year, Christmas tree fires are responsible for approximately $18.3 million in property damage. I actually think that number is significantly low when you look at the property values and the fires that we do go on and within this area. So again, be safe. Keep your trees within three feet away from any type of heat source, 12 inches away from anything that burns. If you can, limit your screw-in light bulbs to no more than 50 per strand or 50 per current connection, and three strands minimum or maximum, I'm sorry, per outlet. Just some of these things that are safe and safe practices. You can go on NFPA.org to find some of these public safety tips, okay? Next slide, or last slide, actually. Our firefighters are still continuing their toy drive. If we are dealing with both residents that come into our stations and donate toys, that we donate to the different civic groups within, in the city, and we also deal with the businesses. And so we are working with our Firefighters Association on that. If you have any toys that you'd like to donate, or your business within the community that wants to organize a pickup, you can contact us at Fire Rescue, one of our firefighters, Cameron Velasco, at 562-944-9713. That's our headquarters fire phone number. And so again, happy holidays to everybody, and thank you again. That's the end of my report.
Thank you, Chief. Now Director of Finance, Travis Hickey.
Good evening again. I really just wanted to reiterate what some of my colleagues also talked about in terms of recognizing and remembering today is Pearl Harbor Day, 80 years. I was fortunate in 1995 to be able to visit the Pearl Harbor Memorial, and even at 20 years old, it was quite a moving experience. And for anyone who has not had the opportunity to do it, I highly recommend it. And that 95 coincided with the 50th anniversary of the end of World War II. So it's amazing 36 years later, 26 years later. But really, besides that, just wanted to say, wish everyone a happy and safe Christmas and New Year's holiday season, and that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Travis. Now I'd like to bring up Maricela Valderas, Director of Police Services.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. So the holiday seasons are a really busy time for community services, so I have several items to share with you this evening. Wanted to start off with our Thankful Neighbor Basket program and recap that event. So on Tuesday, November the 23rd, we held the Thankful Neighbor Basket program, and it took place at the Gustavosco Neighborhood Center. The event was a drive-through event, and we distributed 120 food baskets to the community, and each basket contained a Thanksgiving turkey dinner, a gift card to $50 to Northgate, all that thanks to the generous donations by our local businesses and our residents. I want to thank the mayor and our council members for your attendance and assisting us with the food distribution of the food baskets. Here's a brief video recap in the event.
Next, I wanted to talk about Saturday's annual tree lighting ceremony, which took place on Saturday the 4th. The event was really well attended by our community and well received. Everybody seemed to really enjoy themselves. I'd like to thank our Santa Fe Springs community for bringing out their holiday spirit and always supporting us to the event. There was snow flooding area, there were pictures of Santa, we had food vendors, craft area for the kids, we had a holiday retreat, hot cocoa and cookies for the kids and families, and then the train ride rode with tenants across the park. We had live musicals and performances by our local schools. This event was really truly an effort that would not have, would have been possible without the various departments and them helping us, collaborating with us, communicating with us. I want to thank the Fire Department, Police Service, and Public Works for going above and beyond to ensure that all our event needs were being met. We appreciate your help. In particular, we want to acknowledge the efforts of our city electrician, Abel Maraz, who's always striving to make sure that our Christmas decorations are better each year. I want to commend our Parks and Rec staff for the amazing job that they did planning this event and for their creativity on coming up with a new event layout this year. It just looked terrific. I believe it was Leanne, Aiza, Eric, I, and Diana Armanderas that came up with the new layout, and I think it just looked terrific and it was wonderful. And of course, an event like this wouldn't be possible without the support and leadership of you council members, and I want to thank you for that. We have a video here that recaps the event. Manny Caldono from Community Services, he puts all our videos, event videos together. He does a great job. Next, our annual tree lighting ceremony was just the beginning of our city's holiday festivities. Last night, the 41st Annual Santa Float, it kicked off with stops at Verbic and Westman, Boer and Norwalk, and La Dosana and Alberta. The Santa Float features a Santa tracker, so that the community sees exactly where Santa is and where the reindeer are, so that they drive through the Santa Fe Springs community. The float's going to continue to make stops throughout the next two weeks. We encourage residents to visit our city website to view all our stops and the stop times. Next, our Santa home visits. The float's also going to be making special home visits to 14 lucky Santa Fe Springs residents on Saturday, December the 11th and Saturday, December the 14th. There were 78 entries for this year's home visits, the most that we've seen in many years. Then our home decorating contest, this year's contest is going to be judged on Monday, December the 13th. There were 27 entries in this year's home decorating contest. Similar to Santa's home visits, this was the most entries that we've also seen in many years. This year's judging committee is going to be comprised of our Parks and Rec staff. Once we begin to meet with our city advisory committees, this responsibility will again be brought back to them for them to do the judging. The homes are going to be judged on best use of lights, best use of decorations, and overall appearance of the decorated home. The 12 lucky winners of the home decorating contest are going to be informed on December the 16th. A yard sign will be dropped off at their home, and then we will recognize them at a future council meeting. Then on Sunday, December the 19th, our Parks and Rec Division is going to be hosting a special one-day camp called Grinchmas, and that's going to be for kids ages 5 through 11. This one-day camp is going to be held at Town Center from 12 noon to 4 p.m. The staff are going to lead activities, provide snacks, and there's going to be a viewing of the 1966 animated classic, How the Grinch Stole Christmas. The event's going to provide parents and caregivers an opportunity to do some last-minute shopping or just take some time off and get some rest. And so the registration for this activity is still open. Then this coming Friday, we have our annual Las Posadas over at Heritage Park. That'll start at 6:30. The event's going to host the traditional, the tradition of participants gathering at the north end of Heritage Park, where they will be led on a procession along the walkway. The event will include entertainment with a mariachi group, locurico dancers, a craft area, food trucks, and Santa Claus will also be there to greet the families. Staff will be in contact with each of you to confirm your attendance. And then we have our neighborly elf, a Christmas basket program. Planning efforts are underway for this program. The Christmas basket distribution program is going to take place on Saturday, December 18th, from 9 to 11 at the Gustavosco Neighborhood Center. The event's going to be an in-person pickup with the same look and feel pre-COVID events with just a few COVID safety modifications. The families are going to receive a food basket, toys, and then there will be gift cards that will be provided to the teams. The participants are also going to be able to enjoy a fun craft area for the kids and enjoy a hot cup of cocoa. Our goal is to serve 200 families this holiday season. We are still continuing to accept in-kind donations in the form of canned goods, toys, and gift cards. And staff will also be in contact with you to confirm your attendance. And then lastly, I just want to wish you council members and your families, as well as the Santa Fe Springs community, a memorable and a healthy holiday season. Thank you. That concludes my reports.
Thank you, Maricela. You can see Community Services is very busy at this time of year. And I also like to thank all our veterans on this 80th anniversary of Pearl Harbor Day. My uncle was a World War II Navy veteran, and this is a big, special day for him. He passed a few years ago, years ago, but it makes me remember, because he made me remember, he talked about stories about the Navy during that time. Also, I'd like to wish the mayor, Mayor Protem, city council, city employees, and our community a glorious Christmas season this year, and we have so much to be grateful for, so wanted to just state that. So at this point, Mr. Mayor, Council, our city managers and executive team report is complete.
Thank you, Ray. Thank you, everyone. And before we move on, Maricela, the company that donates those boxes, Corrugated, could we get their information? We need to thank them. Those boxes are incredible. And he's done it, I think, the past couple of years, and he just continues to do so. So I want to definitely send him a thank you. Okay, appointments to committees, commissions, and boards, Councilmember Sarno. Councilmember Trujillo. Councilmembers Amora.
None at this time.
Mayor Protem Rodriguez.
None at this time, Mr. Mayor.
And I have none. Council comments, Councilmember Sarno.
Thanks, sir. First, I'd like to wish my daughter, that's probably watching right now, a happy third birthday today. You know, three years went by so fast, it's just a blessing. Happy birthday, Sophia, and I hope you're watching, go to bed. Second, I want to thank Chief and Noe. You know, it's just an awesome story to have, you know, a traffic director of Public Works and the chief of fire to be able to do something like that. It's just awesome what our city does, and you're never not working. You're always on the job, but the greatest thing is that you guys work as a team, and it just shows the greatness that we have here. It's just really great to see the camaraderie of all of our departments. If you've heard Wayne, Noe, Maricela, we're always complimenting each other, and that's what makes us a great city, because working together, we can do anything. If we're independent, we're not going to be able to get anything accomplished. So kudos to all of you guys, because it's really shown, and especially this past year, the relationship has gotten so much stronger and the bond. I thank you guys for working together, and it really shows on our community. God bless all our servicemen and the fallen soldiers from, I mean, Pearl Harbor. Thank you, guys, and I know you guys are watching down on us to protect us. The event, the Christmas tree lighting event, you know, we couldn't have asked for something better. It was straight out of a movie. You know, that event was what really brings our community together as a small community, the happiness, just the whole event was just picture perfect. Thank you, Maricela. Thanks, everybody, the community. It just really set off the whole Christmas vibe for us. It was just great. So thank you, guys. Merry Christmas to all of my colleagues. Merry Christmas to all of you, and I hope everybody's safe for the holidays, and we'll see you guys next year. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Jay. Councilmember Trujillo.
Awesome to see we're getting back to pre-COVID. It's great. Gus, Maricela, what's great about it is that you guys are management, but you're letting staff run with it, and their imagination is going wild, and you could see it. Yes, the Spacex is the same way, the Christmas festivities. What they're doing is because you're letting them run with ideas. You guys are all a team, and it's great, even though you guys are the leaders, you guys are letting other staff with their ideas do it, and it's coming out so great. Thank you for doing that, too, to the staff. Again, what you guys did, Chief, Noe, things happen for a reason, you were there for a reason, and thank you. Again, that's why we have the best of the best here in our city. Thank you for being that. And Pearl Harbor, kind of funny not, but I know I'm old, but not that old. My father left Pearl Harbor the day before it bombed, so my dad is a, was a World War II veteran, and he was in the Navy, so my dad left the day before it bombed, so I'm very thankful he wasn't there. So yes, servicemen, all of them, whether you're overseas, Navy, Army, Marine, all, we thank you for your service. So thank you. Happy holidays, Merry Christmas. We're going to have a better year than this year, and happy birthday, Sophia, if you're still there. Make your dad get more gray hair, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmembers Amora.
You know, just to echo what my colleagues have been saying, too, the remembrance of December 7th, Pearl Harbor. It was a saddened day that day, of course, and of course, it's a day that, you know, we always need to remember, because, you know, those are the days that make us stronger. Whenever we have any type of chaos, or whenever we have any horrible events happen, I mean, everybody tries to break us as a nation, and they don't realize that they and, and they don't realize that they only make us stronger. And same thing that happens in a city, you know, when people want to break a city or they want to have, you know, uprising or different things that happen, this is a time where we come together, whether it be with your PD, whether it be Parks and Rec, Community Services, Fire, Fire Protection Services, you know, Finance, Planning, and any other department that I may have left out, you know, it, this is like Jay wanting to say that, you know, it is something that we come together and we have to stand, you know, against any other forces. And sometimes God has a plan. You know, he put Chief and Noe together to go have lunch. You know, I know they were eager to go eat and, you know, and there was a different timing. Look at the two people he put together. He put somebody who knows firsthand how to work with individuals in a crisis and then the other individual, you know, understands how to work streets and the maintenance of the streets. I mean, I don't think God could have prepared it any better than that. And that's the God that we serve and that's the God that, you know, that I love and, and you know, and you know, we have Christmas coming up. You know, Merry Christmas to everyone. You know, the word Christmas itself has the words Christ in it, so that's the part that I love most. I do have to report out on independent cities that I went to a couple of months ago and, you know, some of the, and, you know, some of the training services that we, that I was able to learn there. And the tree lighting ceremony, of course, was just a big spectacular event. It was great to see all the little ones, all, you know, when you hear children sing, it, it's, it's true, it's truly amazing because you don't realize what you miss out in the world. I mean, everybody has been secluded for some time. So it was great to see all the little ones, all, you know, their parents, adults, you know, just the fact if you have people having just, you can't see their faces because of course we all have to wear masks. But I think we could all see the squints in our eyes knowing that, you know, how appreciative we are to, to see one another. The Thankful Basket Giveaway Program has always been a good, a big success. It was great to see the, the residents coming, you know, and, and appreciating what, what's given to them. And, and it's a blessing to, to be able to continue to that, continue that. I know we have the Neighborly Elf Program. If those are you, if you guys know loved ones or you guys know certain individuals that are in the community of Santa Fe Springs, then please let them know at the G B N C so they can sign up. Some people do get a little nervous or, you know, some are feel that they're ashamed to, to sign up. I came from a program like that, you know, and I know that the food baskets that we would get, my mom would make the best meals out of it. I didn't realize we were poor until people told me, hey, you're poor. But I didn't realize that, you know, eating certain quesadillas and tacos of beans that that was something, I just thought it was the greatest food. So I was, I was just happy to have food on a plate. So I'm just glad the things that we give out in our baskets is just amazing. So once again, to our staff, thank you for all that you do in our community. You know, may God always have a hedge of protection, not only around you guys, but have a hedge of protection around your families. And I do wish that upon our, our community and our, and our residents here in the city of Santa Fe Springs. So may God always bless the city of Santa Fe Springs.
Thank you, Joe. Mayor Pro Tem Rodriguez.
Good evening. Sorry. Good evening. I wanted to say too about our veterans, I just wanted to say that the attack on Pearl Harbor, December seventh, which, which pushed us into World War Two. I had watched on the news, the veterans, they're all in their wheelchairs. And I listened and one of them said, we should never forget, we got to teach the kids, we have to let them know, you know, that they have to know what happened in, in World War Two. And people said, well, why, you know, why do we have to keep teaching them about a war? And he said, because, so we don't repeat it. So that's why we have to teach our kids because we can't repeat the wars. Okay, so that was a great, you know, great analogy that he had said, and we need to make sure that that it stays in our history and our, our kids learn about it so that we can make sure that we don't repeat it. I just wanted to say to Chief Hayward and Noe, you're our heroes. Thank you for, I know Chief is saying enough, enough, but no, thank you so much for what you did, for helping that gentleman. And I, I see, I saw that there were other people there too that were assisting, so I wanted to make sure to, I know they're not here, but I wanted to make sure to thank them. And I wanted to say about our, our staff with the tree lighting ceremony. I actually came into City Hall with my family to take pictures in front of the, the beautiful tree in the lobby, in the reception area. And as I walked outside, it was just magical. It was magical for me, so I could imagine the children that were out there, the float, you know, I, and all of our council and our mayor, we go out there, you know, we talk to people, we shake hands. But we also have our families with us and I had the privilege of having my two-year-old grandson with me. And we started off with the float, Santa Claus, he's barely learning about Santa Claus. We turned around and went to the crafts. We went to the, the snow sled. And then he got to see what snow was like and I, I almost, I couldn't believe all the snow that was coming out. It was just magical. And so it was a beautiful experience to spend time with my family and enjoy the beautiful tree lighting ceremony. And, and I do love the layout. The layout was, was magnificent. So I want to thank all the staff that put that together because you did an amazing job. And I, we didn't have one last year because of COVID. But in two thousand nineteen, we had our tree lighting ceremony in the front. And I have to say that this one by far is just so much nicer because, because we're at the stage. And so thank you so much to all our staff. Be sure that any staff that's not here, we want to let them know that we appreciate everything that they do. And I also wanted to thank the chamber for having their Christmas lunch today. The mayor and I went to the luncheon to meet up with our mentees and had a very nice event with Christmas music, very festive, beautiful Christmas tree at the town center. And it was, it was very nice and, and humbling to be around the children, to be mentoring with the kids and learning from them. And like I always said, that, you know, we're not giving them the gift, they're actually giving us the gift. When I walk out there, I really, when I walk away from there, I really feel fulfilled that, you know, they're, they're just amazing kids. And if we could do anything to help them, then we're here to serve. That's, that's what we're all here. We're born, we're here to serve people. That's what we should be doing. And with that, I would like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and a happy birthday to your daughter, your three-year-old daughter, Sophia. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna. Well, I think if I say nothing, they've said it all, but certain things do go without saying. Noe and Chief, you know, you guys are on the job, whether you're on the job or not on the job. And, you know, what I love about this community is that we're ready to go no matter what. You know, I've seen rec leaders, you know, come to the aid of somebody without them even being at work. And so I'm very happy and proud to be part of this community. And I love the way all the departments come together for major events, just like the tree lighting. I have to mention that one because that is, I've been to pretty much every single tree lighting there has been since it started. And by far, that's probably been the, the best one. So the collaborative efforts of all the departments and then also, you know, with Gus and Wayne and Mari Sella, you guys just doing that by the helmet and rolling with it, you know, it was a great time that, that everybody had at that one. So thank you for that. Also, you know, never forget Pearl Harbor is something that, you know, we have to always remember and be thankful to our veterans every single day. And some of that, our mayor Pro Tem had mentioned, the chamber that, that we had today, they do that on a yearly basis, but this company, I think, the initials are CPAC. What they do is they actually rehabilitate people with disabilities, whether it's mental or physical, they transition them into their own housing. So a lot of these people with these disabilities actually live on their own. They're being watched by, by somebody, but, you know, today we put a basket together for people that are having their own home, just cleaning products, just something very basic and simple. They're taught how to use them, but they're transitioning into, you know, being completely independent. So that, I think it's called CPAC. I'm not too sure, so I'm probably messing that one up. But it was an incredible event that we had today, putting those baskets together. I think last and not least, I do want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, stay safe, take care of each other. Happy birthday to your daughter, three. I used to have a three-year-old, but not anymore. Enjoy them while you can. We're going to be adjourning to a closed session at this moment. But when we return to close our council, me and today, we're going to do this in memory of Gerardo Posos. He's one of our Navajo Sister City Committee members. So we will now adjourn to the closed session. Give it one second here. But I'd like to call upon the city attorney to read the closed session item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council, members of the audience. In closed session tonight, we have conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, initiation of litigation pursuant to government code section five four nine five six point nine D four, two cases.
Thank you. We will now recess to closed session. We will reconvene at the meeting after the closed session to hear any report from the closed session and to adjourn the meeting. We will reconvene at the meeting after the closed session to hear any report from the closed session and to adjourn the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council.